To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first Burbank City Council meeting of 2024. Today is Tuesday, January 9th. Before we begin, please join me in a moment of reflection. This is a moment for all of us intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The city council welcomes everyone joining us this evening in person and online. We encourage you to take a moment right now to reflect on our community and the work that we will be doing together tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. And as we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what those mean to the community around us. Let us find comfort and solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly and with love for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you all, and if you would now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. It is so good to see everybody here in the room and excited for a new year, new mayor, new look. I hope you love the intro and the new graphic that will be displaying on the bottom of tonight's meeting screen. I should mention, shout out to PIO for the work that they've done here, and this will be implemented across all of our city boards and commissions and school district telecasts. So I hope you all love it. If you got any compliments, please come straight to me. If you have any criticisms, please go directly to, I'm kidding. Please, please come to me too. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Anthony?
Present.
Councilmember Mullins?
Present.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Present.
And Mayor Schultz?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we go on, I'd like to advise the community that there will be two periods of public comment tonight, and I'll explain a little bit more about each period. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period, which will come first tonight. Public comment for every report to council, there's only one report tonight, will be taken in person only. Now, the first period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item that we're talking about tonight. If you would like to participate in the general public comment period by phone, if you haven't already done so, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person public comment has been heard. Additional in-person-only public comment for the second public comment period will be available after the one report is made to council later in tonight's agenda. Now, we have six announcements this evening. And there is nothing wrong with your television set. There will be audio. First meeting of the year, a couple glitches, we'll get through it.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Yes. I'll tell you what, I'll try something we haven't done in a while. If you could get, thank you.
Visit lacountyrentrelief.com to apply. The application-
Oh, better restart. All right.
The Los Angeles County Rent Relief Program is currently accepting applications from landlords seeking direct financial assistance as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Visit lacountyrentrelief.com to apply. The application deadline is Friday, January 12th at 11:59 PM. The City of Burbank is developing a vision for its sister city partnerships. These partnerships can focus on economic development, tourism, cultural exchange, learning, and more. Share your thoughts at any of the upcoming public meetings hosted by Burbank Public Library. Registration is not required. For information about meeting times and locations, visit burbanklibrary.org/sistercity to learn more. You may also send comments to sistercity@burbankca.gov. Christmas tree drop-off stations are available at Ralph Voie Park, McCambridge Park, and Verdugo Park, now through January 26th. Residents may also set out their holiday trees curbside for no additional cost. Lights, decorations, and stands must be removed prior to disposal, and artificial trees are prohibited. View all safety disposal tips on burbankca.gov. Volunteers are needed for the homeless count in Burbank on Tuesday, January 23rd. Register online at theycountwillyou.org. For more information, contact the Community Development Department at 818-238-5182. The City of Burbank, in collaboration with RJM Design Group, is conducting a City Parks Master Plan. This master plan will guide parks and recreation development now and in the future. If you are interested in getting involved and providing your feedback, visit The Parks and Recreation Department is excited to invite qualified artists to submit proposals for the Johnny Carson Park Shade Structure Art Project. We are seeking creative proposals for an artistic shade structure that will enhance the beauty and functionality of the stage and park. For detailed information and instructions on submitting a proposal, please refer to the Call for Artists document accessible through the Parks and Recreation page at burbankca.gov. Please direct any questions or comments pertaining to this project to callforartists@burbankca.gov. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right. Thank you to staff for the announcements. Next on our agenda, we have not one, not two, but you're all lucky, three presentations on the agenda this evening to the Burbank City Council. First up, I'm really excited about this one. It is a presentation of certificates of recognition to the winners of the 2023 Our Burbank Holiday Decorating Contest. Give a round of applause to everyone who participated. So here's what we're gonna do. A little bit of programming note, so don't catch anyone off guard. First, we're gonna announce all the winners in the different categories. When I call your name, if you're present, if you could come up either to my left or to my right, we have a certificate for you, and stay right here, because we're gonna take a group photo. After we've done that, I have a few other words I just want to share with everybody. So are we ready to begin? Fantastic. And our first award recipient is Katie Jones for the youth category. Is Katie here? Oh, okay, Katie's not here. I'll accept on her behalf. I'm kidding. Katie, if you're watching from home, great job. Congratulations. That is fantastic work. Yes, we can do a round of applause for every winner. Okay, the next one is the commercial category, and I want to welcome up any representatives that we have from the actors group. Do we have anybody? Yes, we do. And what's your name?
Penny Moore.
Penny, thank you for being here. Congratulations. If you want to stand right there. And next, this is the third place prize, which is a paper certificate, I'm sorry. Next year will be even better, right? Whoever is in the mayor's seat will spring for something nicer. There we go. But third place in the residential category, congratulations to Alan Faulkner. Okay, we're getting closer to the top place prize. Number two in the residential category, unfortunately, they're not with us, but I will say it is today Sayadion, and I apologize, by the way, if I ever mispronounce anyone's name, please feel free to correct me. Now, today isn't here, but we do have Hassan Vahan, his son, who I believe is here to accept on his behalf. Did you help your dad decorate at all this year? Okay, fantastic. You guys had a great display. We're gonna see it all here in a second. And in the first place residential category, I would like to congratulate Arnolfo Padilla. Oh, and Tina Schaefer. Arnolfo, Tina, hey. Here's another round of applause for all the winners. I will allow all of you to take your seat, and while we do that, if we can show our slideshow, we're gonna get a chance to see the work that these amazing residents did. Well done. And before we move to our next presentation, I really just wanted to say thank you all for making Burbank such a special place to be. These light displays are one of the things that really drew my family to want to call Burbank home. We love driving through it every year and seeing the creativity and the imagination. And I will say, you do make my life a little bit harder, because now my wife's like, what are you gonna do next year? So, I don't know. Get Vahan to help you out. Well, I have energy for, but again, congratulations, everyone, and thank you for what you do. Our second presentation tonight is recognition, I'm so excited to talk about this one, recognition of the Burbank Tournament of Roses Association on their big win. Let's do a little trivia and pop quiz. Does anybody know what our float won this year? Anybody at all? You guys know. Anyone else? Yes, sir. The Mayor's Award, the best award. So Linda, if you wouldn't mind joining me up here, I'd love to have you share a few words as you're making your way up. I just want to say to everyone who was part of the float this year, I apologize that I couldn't be with you in person. I was visiting a sick relative, but I just want to say on behalf of the entire city, our city council, we are so proud of you and thankful for the work that you do. It's never lost on me that on the first new day of every year, the entire country, in fact, the entire world, is watching this parade, and what a great way to show pride in our community, and we couldn't do that without all of you. So thank you for your contributions and making Burbank so, just so proud of all of you, really. Linda, do you want to say a couple words about this year's, I have a few prepared things, but anything you'd like to say about this year's float design or the work that the volunteers did?
Any given day, we had anywhere from 150 to 300 volunteers work on our float. There are six self-built floats left in the parade. I'd like to say that the six self-built floats are made with a whole lot of love. We had a lot of dedicated volunteers down there. We were fed by different Burbank restaurants and supply houses that took care of us, so we were very well fed. I do want to invite some of my team members up here. I have my construction chair, John Ri- my decorations chair, Terry Coombs. My vice president in charge of float, Stephen Edward. My manpower chairperson, Teresa Green. Our treasurer, Robin Hanna. Two people that worked in our break area to help feed us, Kim and Jeff Cecatini. Our master blender, Debbie Curtin. Okay. And one last person. We were very fortunate this year. We had a lady come in, and I was told, come on back to the back. We have something special for you. Sat down, and she gave me a massage. So our masseuse. Our official masseuse. Oh, and Jason Deal, who is in charge of our vials. Jason, you are not forgotten at all. I'm sorry. This is just a handful of the hardworking volunteers that worked each and every day. Speaking of hardworking, this Saturday, January 13th, is deconstruction. So if you want to get your long-sleeved plastic rubber gloves on, come down and wash some vials, wash some buckets. We will be feeding lunch again this year, so that will be taken care of by us. You're gonna have a good time. Then we're also going to deconstruct the float. For the smaller kids under our float, we might have some Lucky Charms that come in silver color, that you can put in a gumball machine, something fun. Anyway, I'd like to thank everybody for helping us, the police department, City of Burbank, Water and Power, Parks and Rec, PIO office, everybody that has helped us this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. And as we're getting lined up for the photo, I'm just gonna share a couple facts about this year. This was our 70 BTORA's, I should say, 76th consecutive float entry, 75th, okay, and the city's, I believe, 91st, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, 91st float entry in the parade. The theme this year was celebrating a world of music, the universal language, and our float was titled Caterpillar Melodies. So again, thank you to all of the volunteers. And Linda, before you go, I got one more question for the group. Show of hands. I think this is one of the neatest community ways to just get involved and to do something great together. Show of hands, how many of you have been involved in this for at least five years? 10 years, keep your hand raised. 15? 20? 25? 45? I don't know. Wow, okay. Linda, my final question to you is, how can someone, if they want to get involved and be part of this, what's the best way to do it?
Best way to do it is go to burbankrosefloat.com. You can see all of our information that we have there when we're gonna be down at the float. You can sign up for our newsletters. You can sign up to become a member. Very inexpensive to become a member. If you're a member, you can also take one of our welding classes. A lot of fun. I decorated something so many years ago, and I saw it on TV, and I knew millions of people around the world saw it, and I was hooked. Design, we're gonna do this again? Okay.
76 time.
Yes. And by the way, it was Burbank's first entry was 110 years ago, 1914. So that's how long, probably some of them have been doing it. Just joking, guys. Yes, last September, we actually started our 2025 Design the Float Contest, and what we do is we have a hint, but I'm not gonna tell you the hint. I'm gonna make you go to burbankrosefloat.com and check the hint. It has our design contest form and how to enter the design contest. And I will tell you from experience, you start with a black and white line drawing, and it's just a concept that you're going for. I was lucky enough to have my float submitted one year, that they didn't even know it was my float, and to see it come to life is so, so amazing. So please come to our website, that's burbankrosefloat.com. Did I say that's burbankrosefloat.com? And otherwise, it's, what's your number, Steve? Come down on Saturday, you're gonna have a great time.
Congratulations again, everyone. Linda, this is for you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and I will see you this weekend for deconstruction. So if you want to get involved, the mayor's gonna be there. You might as well come on down and get started Saturday. All right. And our third and final presentation this evening is the presentation of my first proclamation as mayor in 2024, and it is to declare January 16th, that's a week from Monday, a week from yesterday, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day here in the City of Burbank. I'd like to invite a couple individuals up here to join me and to say a few words. So in no particular order, but all with importance, we have Burbank Library Monitor Yvette Dabney. Yvette, come on up. Have you stand right there. And then I'm gonna give these to you in just a second. And then we also have Burbank Licensing Code Inspector Jordan Hill. Now, because I only have two hands, and I do have to hold the microphone, I'm gonna give this to one of you. You're each gonna get to walk home with one today, but I am gonna read this out loud for the benefit of everyone, and then I'd like the community to hear from each of you. So proclamation, whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia on January 15th, 1929, was ordained a Baptist minister at the age of 19, and rose to national prominence as a leader of the American Civil Rights Movement in the 1950s and 1960s. And whereas Dr. King's commitment to the elimination of injustice and the doctrine of nonviolence helped bring down legal and political barriers across America and changed forever the way that Americans view unfairness and discrimination. And whereas Dr. King's leadership will, sorry, Dr. King's leadership, will, and compassion at civil rights protests throughout our nation inspired millions to believe in his dream for an America in which all her countrymen are treated equally and justly. And whereas people everywhere continue to look to Dr. King's example as a model in human relations, and his role in the struggle for civil rights has persisted since his assassination in 1968 and will continue until his vision of the universal freedom, equality, and justice is finally realized for all. And whereas Public Law 98-144, signed into law on November 2nd, 1983, declared the third Monday of each January a national holiday honoring the birth and the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now, I, Nick Schultz, mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim January 15th, 2024, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Burbank, and I encourage all of my fellow residents to reflect on the principles of racial equality and nonviolent social change espoused by Dr. King. So with that, I want to give each of you a proclamation. I thank you both for being here. And Jordan, I think you wanted to speak first? Fantastic.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited about this. So I prepared a little something to share with you. So I'm extremely proud to join all of you who worked tirelessly to serve this community on this day of proclamation declaring January 15th Reverend and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in this great city of Burbank. This proclamation is not only a testament to Reverend King's infinite contribution to the world, but it serves as a much-needed reminder that our strength lies in the hopes and dreams that we have in common, not in our differences. I grew up looking at a painting of him on our living room wall that was a depiction of his facial expression in the moment of his assassination. Of course, it wasn't literal, my mom was very astute, but I would gaze at his beautiful brown skin and deep brown eyes that exuded pain and heart-wrenching sorrow, and yet they conveyed a sense of strong conviction and hope that inspired me. I eventually realized that people felt threatened by his ability to instill hope and empower people to act collectively with a common goal of achieving equality for all men, women, and children. He said, and I quote, "You can kill the dreamer, but you can't kill the dream." He was right. We all continue to benefit from his dream, and I thank Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and each of the council members, and all of you for being present every day to exemplify how perseverance, commitment, and service are the common goals that ensure our community will continue to thrive. Thank you.
Jordan, Jordan, thank you for those beautiful words and for your service to our community. Yvette?
Good evening. It is with tremendous pride that I acknowledge and thank you, City of Burbank, Burbank Mayor Schultz, City Manager Hess, distinguished city council members and citizens. Thank you. We appreciate this proclamation in honor of the MLK National Holiday and the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. In tribute to this great leader, I have a few personal accounts that I'd like to share. First, I am a native of Atlanta, Georgia, born and raised. Atlanta is also the birthplace of Dr. King. In fact, if you're ever in Atlanta, Georgia, you can visit his actual birthplace and the historic family home on Auburn Avenue. It's currently run and maintained by the National Park Service. It's next to the King Center, his historic church, and I'll tell you more about that later. But as a young girl, I got one of the greatest surprises of my life, a chance to get a closer look at this great man. After being picked up from a youth activity, a friend and I loaded up in the back of her family station wagon, and we were told by my friend's mother that we needed to stop off at another home so that she could attend a quick meeting. We pulled up into the driveway, and a very beautiful woman exited the door to greet us. As my friend and I got out of the station wagon, I could see this beautiful woman's face a little clearer, and I said to myself, oh my, that's Coretta Scott King, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s widow. She graciously welcomed us into the family home, and as soon as we stepped in, I saw history unfolding before my eyes. I saw pictures, pictures of the great leader's life. I noticed all of the books he had written on bookshelves. My friend and I walked right up to those books. Her mother gave us a look. We stepped back, and Mrs. King said, oh, cheerfully, oh, no, it's okay, they can look at whatever they want. So we went right up to those books, and we checked out those books that he had written, and books that were written about him. And by the way, you can check those books out too. They're in the Burbank Public Library, right up the road where I work. But back to my little story. So we looked at all the pictures, just all these pictures, all over the walls, all over the house. We saw photos of Dr. King posing with his family after he received the Nobel Peace Prize in Norway in 1964, at the ripe age of 35. We saw framed pictures of the historic marches from Selma to Montgomery held in 1965. We saw photos from the Montgomery Bus Boycott in 1955. That was a foundational event in the Civil Rights Movement, pictures of diner sit-ins, protests for equal voting rights, school protests, integrate schools, his wedding pictures, family photos, and framed snapshots from his iconic "I Have a Dream" speech at the March on Washington in 1963, and more and more framed photos, priceless treasures to mark the life and times of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It was truly a moment that I will cherish forever, to see the original prints of these memories that I had studied in books all my life. I thought about how brave and courageous Dr. King was, how he carefully planned nonviolent movements to ensure freedom and justice for all. He was such a powerful speaker and writer. His words will always be cherished by people all over the world. What a great man. A natural-born leader who accomplished intense missions for equality. He was often met with resistance and violence, but he stayed calm, focused, and determined, and everyone following his lead did too. Vicious dogs- Vicious dogs, blasting water hoses, harsh words, insults, rocks and debris thrown at him and the other marchers, but they linked arm in arm and they marched on. Dr. King marched on with people of all ages, races, and nationalities who also wanted to see change in the world. We have to keep his dream alive and never let it go. We have to even the playing field for African-Americans today. We deserve better jobs, more pay, decent housing, fair treatment in the justice system, voting systems, educational opportunities, and more. Dr. Martin Luther King will forever be known as the drum major for justice. A famous quote of his declares, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." As we celebrate this King Holiday, January 15th, I encourage you to watch the annual ecumenical service held at Dr. King's historic church in Atlanta. All you have to do is go to TheKingCenter.org. Again, that's TheKingCenter.org. This is a phenomenal event that you don't want to miss. Dr. King's youngest daughter, the Reverend Dr. Bernice King, is CEO of the King Center. The founder of the King Center was her late mother and the wife of Dr. King, Mrs. Coretta Scott King. You can also visit the grave sites, the final resting places for Dr. King and Mrs. King right beside the King Center in Atlanta. It's a well-known tour stop. You should know that Mrs. King worked extremely hard for years to get this National King Holiday. She was joined in this effort by the musician and singer Stevie Wonder, who wrote the famous song "Happy Birthday to You, Dr. King" in his honor. The song is still one of the most famous songs of all time, and it played a major role in making the King Holiday a reality. Locally, there will be a Kingdom Day Parade in our area, and you can see it in person or you can watch it on ABC Channel 7. When you're in the nation's capital, please make sure that you pay tribute to Dr. King by visiting his memorial statue. The 30-foot statue is on the Washington Mall in Washington, DC, between the Jefferson and Lincoln Memorials. More displays on the life and times of Dr. King are available at the National Museum of African-American History and Culture, one of the finest museums in the world. And I'm rounding it up. All of these tributes, and there are many scheduled all over the world, January 15th, are an important acknowledgement of American history and a great American son internationally known and respected, a man who changed history for the better by the ripe age of 39. Thank you, Dr. King. We honor you, and we will always remember your great work and sacrifice here in these United States of America. Many thanks again to the prestigious city of Burbank for this proclamation honoring the National King Holiday and for recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
I am rarely speechless, and I'm not gonna say much, but thank you both for bringing his life, his legacy, to memory. I could feel it in this room, and I just, I thank you both for letting us be a part of that and experiencing it. And I loved the quotes, and there was one that he always said that has stuck with me, and that is, "Everyone can be great because everyone can serve." So on Monday, please, celebrate his legacy. Do something here in the community to celebrate, and then get back out there, and let's make the world and the community a better place. Thank you all for being here. Congratulations to everybody. You know, Councilmember Anthony, that's quite the hike back up here. I didn't realize that.
It gives everyone time to leave if they don't want to stay. That's what it's for.
Well, again, thank you to all of the recipients of the recognition this evening as they're making their exit, and thank you. City Manager Justin Hess, do you have anything to report this evening?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I do. Thank you. I'd like to call up our Chief of Police, Mike Albanese, to provide an update on our latest new vehicle for the mental health and evaluation team.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Chief Albanese, we're ready when you are.
Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, City Councilmember Takahashi Anthony in Mullins. Happy New Year. So, great way to start the new year. The journey is over. So this has been a long, impatient journey for our organization. So let me wheel back three and a half years ago when we submitted in the budget a request for a vehicle that would provide personalized transportation for folks that are in the midst of a crisis. So a lot of folks have their DNA on this. So it starts with the city manager that accepted that we made the request, the city council approving the budget, and then the journey began with Public Works, and ultimately IT is gonna have the final DNA on all of this. So what we have, if you can cue it up, please, is the arrival of our met vehicle. So nothing extraordinary, Ford Explorer, but when you go to the inside, next slide, please, you're gonna see the inside, and this is where we have a personalized safety compartment. If the vehicle is downstairs, some of you have seen it, but for the community, if they want to also see it, it'll be downstairs for another half hour or so. But it's a compartment that provides safety for the subject and for folks that are transporting. And there's also an area for a family member, a clinician, to sit next to them, to be there to help them during the crisis as we transport them to hospitalization. In addition to that, there's avionics associated with this. So this vehicle, what you don't see is the avionics associated with new police vehicles. So it has a computer that will act as EMDT, the Mobile Digital Terminal, that is a tough book. So this has all the neat stuff now in this vehicle. In addition to that, it has cameras in there for the safety of the officers, for the safety of the subject. So you have the Axon component that's associated with that, and we are very proud of everyone who has their DNA or who had their DNA on this because it was a bit of a journey. So sometimes, what did your mom tell you? Just be patient, good things will happen. So we have been patient. It has arrived. So again, I want to thank Public Works, Ken Berkman and his staff. IT, Kevin's staff, were extraordinary as far as getting the avionics put in, and of course, City Council CM for at least embracing the conceptual model because this is a big deal. So having said that, it has arrived, we are in a much better place.
Thank you very much, Chief. And you said it'll be downstairs until about 7:00 PM?
Yes, yes.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chief Albanese. Very exciting for our community. Mr. Hess, anything else? Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney, would you please report on today's closed session agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and for the benefit of the public, the city council met this evening at 5:00 PM in closed session to discuss two matters of anticipated litigation. The first matter was city has a potential plaintiff in one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. The second matter was as the city has a potential defendant pursuant to Government Code Section The city council took no reportable action in these matters.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Now is the time for our general public comment period. This is the first of two public comment periods this evening. For members of the public who are here in person and would like to speak, please present a completed yellow general public comment card to the city clerk. They're available right over there in the corner. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment, this first public comment period. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum allotted time of three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is remaining. We also ask that you please state your name for the record. For those who wish to call in during the general public comment period, please, if you haven't already done so, call right now, 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. The first commenter that I have here is Ron Bax, followed by Jordan Mandelberg. So, Mr. Bax, when you're ready. Take your time, we're not gonna start that timer.
I don't need to announce myself, you announce me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. A speaker to previous meeting was upset about the 6% increases every year and did not know where the money was going. I can help a little bit with that. Here's a partial list of my recent financial expenses or consideration of, should've read, possible expenses. I had a pool, and the 1995 law grandfathered that pool in, but the insurance company didn't see it that way, so I had to spend $18,000 recently to have the pool removed, and $39,000 to fix the deck where the pool used to be. Now, I gave you a quote before that I have an estimate for a partial repainting of the building, which is three times what it was 10 years ago, no, eight years ago, and that comes to about 12% per year over 10 years. Okay? That's compounded. The roof, 50K, it was 34K before, but I assume it's gonna be like 100K now because it's still the same. It's painting nowadays, it uses silicone, and silicone is very expensive. AC, I had an AC go out in the house, okay? $11,000. Let's say it's $12,000. That means that if I spent, or put aside $100 a month for 10 years, I'd be able to pay for that air conditioner. I don't think the tenant's gonna wait that long. The driveway, again, this is 13K, it was 12K. Let's use 12K. We can calculate that for the future, but that's because, we didn't know what it was, it was a magnolia root, and I've owned that property for almost 50 years, and I know there's never been a tree, especially not a magnolia tree, where that root was coming from. So apparently, magnolia trees continue to grow when they're gone. Okay? Gas, it was 77% per year because it's gone up to 200%, and if it stays flat this year, it'll be 44% over the last three years. Now, if you have a gas bill, I'm assuming you do, you got a notice from the gas company that you get on email list that when the commodity goes up 20%, so what do you think the gas company thinks is going to happen? The gas for last year was equivalent to 44% of my property tax, which means if it was 40%, it could go up two and a half times to equal the 2% increase in property tax, which would be a little less than 5%. Like I said, it's gone up 73%, okay? Water and power, I don't recall, I just put it down, I didn't have time to research and see if that was 8% per year or over two years. My trash, because SB 1383 has gone up 60% over the last year, and that's about 20% equivalent to my property tax. So it could go up five times, it could be 10%, but like I said, it's 60%. And I'm running out of time, so we're gonna put a pin here, and I'll be back next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bax. Next, I have Jordan Mandelberg, followed by Joe Pimienta.
You run the timer. Great. Mr. Mayor, distinguished gentlemen, ladies, I find that this "keep a dream alive and never let it go" is, you heard, and I saw you nod to that. I, too, grew up staring at a picture of Dr. King. He was marching in 1963 on Washington with Jewish leaders side by side. We started this with, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a force for good and a beacon of democracy." My name is Jordan Mandelberg, I'm a lifetime Democrat, a longtime Burbank resident, and I have a son in the Burbank School District. I'm here today to follow up with the board here, specifically Councilmember Anthony. We talked about this, and he had some comments where he withdrew his endorsement of Representative Schiff due to the representative's support of Israel's right and obligation to defend himself. He used the office as mayor to send out a press release notifying the public of his change of endorsement. Councilmember Anthony, as we spoke before, I'm deeply disturbed, and to be frank, I'm disappointed by your actions and lack thereof, by calling a press release to announce that you are changing your endorsement from Representative Schiff, who has not only been a longtime ally, confident and foe to those who disrupt democracy like former President Trump, you have, albeit unintentionally, weaponized hatred. I remain in contact with the representative office in this matter. As Secretary of State Blinken has said many times over, Israel has a right, indeed the obligation, to defend itself. Councilmember Anthony, as mayor, you have still not condemned the horrific terrorist attack that happened in Israel on October 7th. Rather, as mayor, you pivoted to use the attack in which Americans were killed and taken hostage to pander for political points by releasing a press release in spite of your friendship with the representative. When we spoke last October, early November, you told me of a Jewish woman at the WGA picket lines that did not ask you not to come by her table. It might have confused you, but it makes perfect sense to me. Using a country and their right to self-protection as a political ploy is dangerous and is not a fun story like being spanked by a cross dresser for publicity. This is life and death. This is the very existence of the Jewish people. Would you have responded differently had this attack happened on American soil and only Jews had been victims? I am asked this sincerely because the only difference between what happened there and here on 9/11 is the location. Tell me, what other nation on earth has to justify her existence more than Israel? Do you think on October 7th, these attacks were justified? This is a real question, and I would love a response from anybody. It's a liberal democracy in Israel. It battles politically like no other, like every other country, including here. Israel is a Western civilization, a beacon of democracy. It has given the Western world more things that we use than anybody knows. Crickets are complacency, and the silence remains definitely. Unfortunately...
Mr. Mandelberg, that's your time. Thank you for your comments, sir. Next, we have Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, public. My name is Joe Pimienta, I am a resident of Burbank, and first and foremost, I just want to wish everyone a happy new year. Welcome back. I hope you had a great season of festivities. Right off the top, I just want to give another congratulations to Burbank for winning the float and to everyone who was here. That was really cool. And for those of you who have not had the chance, go check it out. It's standing in the parking lot in front of the public library. It's gorgeous. Now, as you're all very familiar with what I've said over the past year, as a member of the Burbank Tenant Union, I am constantly advocating for tenant protections in the city of Burbank. Also, one of the things that I am constantly doing is door-to-door canvassing, as well as canvassing on different events and whatnot, just talking to renters, talking to other people, talking to landlords, and so on and so forward, and constantly attending the Burbank Tenant Landlord Commission. So, all that to say that I have a lot of interactions with different tenants, and one of the things that I constantly keep hearing is, they're considering leaving because of the constant increase of rent. That is the thing that I hear the most, is that when it comes into maintenance, it's a mixed bag. Different buildings require different maintenance, everyone has different experiences, you know, again, there are good landlords, there are bad landlords, there are difficult tenants, there are good tenants, there are bad tenants. Anyways, but the thing that is straining them the most is the constant, every year, raise of rent to the point that they consider leaving. This is anecdotal, but because I bike around a lot, I happen to be seeing a lot more for rent signs. That's interesting, I wonder what that's about. Anyways, I just want to keep bringing this up because I know that there's a roundtable between tenants and landlords coming up, which the Burbank Tenant Union is very excited about to see where it leads. But also, these are some of the biggest concerns, is that when it comes into just a quality of life, the reason why they consider leaving the great city of Burbank is because the constant rent increases is unsustainable. This destabilizes their lives, they are running out of options. Other than that, I'll take the bait, I want to take my opportunity just to say that I am also joining the people that are constantly yelling that there should be a ceasefire, and I am on the side of the people that are yelling for the need for a free Palestine. So with that, thank you very much, thank you for your work, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pimienta. Madam Cindy Clerk, any other in-person comment cards?
No more in-person, but we have one telephone caller.
Okay, let's send them through.
The first caller is Tom Raider.
Tom, you are on with the Burbank City Council, your time starts now. Tom, you are on with the Burbank City Council, your time starts now.
What happens in the city is you weasel your way in, kick a little law freedman ass, and immediately she points you and puts you in because she's your warlord. That's how you got in, right, Nick Schultz? And apparently, all I gotta say is, during college or something, I had a four-minute experience with a woman, now I'm part of the entire LGBTQ+ community, and you're known as that individual, right, Nikki Perez? And then, all I gotta say is that, oh, today I feel autistic, and no diagnosis needed, no nothing needed, and now I'm becoming known as X-Meier Spanky, right, Spanky? So this is the way things are going in Burbank. Let me tell you what X-Meier Spanky did the other day on Twitter. He went ahead and utilized a three-year-old murder in our kids' personal, private Twitter exchange, effectively calling the murderer, this individual that went ahead and killed this three-year-old in a drive-by shooting, and what did he do? He uses that political stunt. He's talking about how small the casket is, and this and that, and gun problems, how is his gun problem? The guy was a convicted felon, where's all of your gun laws that even stop him from getting a gun? That's number one. And number two, and number two, most importantly, Spanky, what the hell are you doing talking about somebody else's kid? What are you doing? You don't care. None of that happens, you're using me as a political ploy. The guy was a convicted felon. You sit there and you advocate for a policeless state, you advocate to defund the police, you hate law and order. Except for when you need it, when the Armenians decided to mob you, and who did you call? You called the police to come and save you. Well, let me tell you what, don't use little children's death as your political ploy, you
Okay, thank you for your comment. Any other folks on the line?
That was our last caller.
Okay, there being no further public comment, I now declare the general public comment period closed. Colleagues, now is the time for a brief response from the city council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Would anyone like to make a comment or a response? Yes, Councilmember Anthony.
I'll start us off. Thanks, everybody, for coming down. Thank you, Mr. Bax, for walking us through that. That is very unfortunate with the insurance agencies and your pool, not cool. Mr. Mandelberg, I know I talked with you and your father, and I have been a huge supporter of the Jewish community here in Burbank. I attend temple and the Holocaust remembrance, and many walks and protests and speeches and rallies against antisemitism, but I am not a supporter of the Prime Minister overseas who's doing some really bad stuff. I can't support somebody simply because they hold office, that's not the kind of person that I am. So, I will continue to speak out against what he's doing over there, until he's voted out, because it is a liberal democracy, and people need to take accountability for their leaders. To the woman who called in, whose name I couldn't hear, I attended a funeral on the 28th of December for a young boy named Gore Adomian. It was here in Burbank, it was at the Western Diocese Church, and he was laid to rest in Forest Lawn. He was unfortunately killed in a road rage incident up in Lancaster. It was very heartbreaking, and the community here in Burbank and Glendale and the surrounding areas showed up en masse, there was a large number of people there, and it was not for political gain, I did not use it for any reason, it was just important that people be there, it's that simple. Attending difficult events is, I think, the job of an elected leader, and so that's why I was there. And just for clarification, we had a talk about this six months back, about not using my title or my position as an elected official when advocating for political things outside of this office, so no, I did not use the office of mayor to distribute a press release in case anybody was asking, I did that on my own time, on my own personal accounts. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comment or response to public comment?
I'd like just to congratulate everyone who came in tonight for the winner of the holiday decoration, the Burbank Tournament of Roses Association, great job, we're very proud of all the work you've done, and then also to the recipients of Martin Luther King proclamation tonight, and to the speakers that came in, and yes, I do get a gas bill, and mine didn't look too good this month either, so thank you for pointing that out. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember, oh, yes, Councilmember Tagashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, again, thank you to those who came out to our first public comment in 2024, appreciate your being participation in that historic moment. And to Mr. Bax and Mr. Pimienta, I just want to say I'm impressed by your tenacity and your reliability, and thank you for continuing to come and to speak about things that are important to you. I really appreciate that. I also wanted to do a special shout-out to the three presentations tonight, the MLK comments, the folks who are commenting about that, it was such a beautiful commentary, I just wanted to say how much I appreciated that. And for the Tournament of Roses, it's my favorite event of the year, and I just am so glad that Burbank's a part of it, and I don't know if the picture's already up yet, but our picture of the float will be up at the Central Library if it's not already there, and I'm looking forward to looking that over there. And then, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the holiday decoration contest, or that part is being so iconic for Burbank, and I am proud to say that for several years, I was the chair for that committee, and one of the best parts of being on that committee was being able to ride in the van that drives around and does the judging. So folks in the community, if you enjoy that, if you enjoy the list of houses, I encourage you to volunteer, it's on the website at r-burbank, burbankca.com, or burbank.ca/rburbank, and you can volunteer to be in the van too, and that's super fun, it's a party van, where you go around and you judge all the houses, that's pretty cool. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to take a minute to say those things.
Of course, thank you. Vice Mayor, any response?
Yeah, of course, once again, Happy New Years, everybody, welcome back, and thank you to our speakers for bringing up these important issues, not everybody comes to the first meeting of the year, so thank you for coming down. To Mr. Bax and Mr. Pimienta, although I won't say anything else, because it's not agendized, I do want to thank you both for being here tonight, for your comments always on the rental and housing items that staff in this council are continuing to work on. To Mr. Mandelberg, thank you for coming to speak to us today, and I'm only addressing this because I know you asked for a response from the rest of council as well, I'm grateful to Councilmember Anthony for addressing you with candor and his thoughts, and for explaining delineation, you were not using city accounts in any way, shape, or form, those were personal moments, right, and personal things, and they were done on campaign time, which is why I do want to let you know, if you're watching, and if you go back and watch this, not being dismissive of you in any way, I know this is a very deep issue that many of our community members are feeling, everything that is happening over on the other side of the world is affecting you all very deeply, and I feel that. But I will not be addressing Mr. Anthony's endorsement, as that is campaign, and that is not something we should be addressing from the dais, and not something I will ever address from the dais. We keep those things separate, government and campaign, two separate entities, and we will make sure it remains that way. And congratulations to the float, oh my God, I'm just so excited about that, just congratulations once again, if you haven't had a chance to see it, it's still up there, and happy Martin Luther King Jr. Day, everybody, coming up.
Great, well, thank you, colleagues and staff, for responses and all your work tonight. I just wanted to say one more time, thank you to everyone who came down to the first meeting of the year, you all clearly get a gold star, because you're here with us to start the year, and just quickly, to the person who's calling in, I think, second meeting in a row now, tonight identified themselves as Tom Rader, I just wanted to let you know, the sound quality was pretty poor, I could only speak for myself, but I had a very hard time hearing you, so I would just invite you at the next meeting to come down and address us in person, so we can hear you loud and clear. That is all I have. So, with that, we will move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three items on tonight's consent calendar. Approval of the city council minutes of the joint meeting of December 5th, 2023, the regular meeting of December 12th, 2023, the city council reorganization meeting of December 18th, 2023, and the dark meetings of December 19th, December 26th, 2023, and January 2nd, 2024. Item two is approval of the proposed city council meeting schedule for the calendar year 2024, and our last item is introduction of an ordinance amending city council compensation and adoption of a resolution to approve a citywide salary schedule. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Clerk. Do we have a motion or any comment on the, brief comment on consent calendar items?
I make a motion to move the consent calendar.
I'd like to second with a amendment, if the maker is so kind. I don't want to pull it, but I'd love to make an amendment to item number two, switching the proposed March 12th meeting with the March 19th dark meeting.
Before I ask the maker if they accept, so to clarify, you would change that item to where March 12th, we do not have a meeting, March 19th, we do.
That's correct. Okay. That's the only amendment I would make, if the maker of motion is okay with that.
Councilmember Mullins, do you accept that amendment?
So you're, so we will have a dark meeting for Election Day, and then we will be not meeting on the 12th, but meeting on the 19th.
Yes, that's their requesting.
Yep, that sounds fine to me.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve as amended, any other discussion? Nope, Madam City Clerk, let's go to the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, before we move on-
Yes.
-just as, we've already voted on it, but I did have a discussion with staff about the calendar and the annual Los Angeles County homeless count. Again, this year, they have decided to put their count on a day we have a meeting, so none of us will be able to participate. Staff is going to look into finding a way that we can be proactive with their scheduling so that it doesn't happen again, so anybody this month is disappointed. Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, there's no guarantees, it's hard to, you know, they're making decisions, but we'll certainly try to do it where we can have that as a dark night, so council can participate, so.
Thank you for that, would really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone, and I will briefly mention, if you have to be physically away from this location, under new state law, you can remotely participate up to twice a year, please consult with staff if that's something you need to do. With that, we're going to go to our first and only report this evening. As a reminder, after staff's presentation, the council will proceed with in-person public comment only, so please fill out one of those yellow public comment cards and hand it to Ms. Clerk over here. Just as a reminder, speakers will have three minutes to speak on the agenda item at the conclusion of the staff presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on the agenda item during the period of general public comment. And with that, let's have our first report to council. We have Ms. Catherine Librato from the city manager's office, welcome. And your first report, I believe, right?
Well, not my first report to council, but my first report to this council in this position.
Outstanding, well, let's hear it.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and members of the city council. Catherine Librato, Assistant to the City Manager, City Manager's Office. I'm here tonight to present a report to appoint members of the city council to the 31 committees listed on Attachment 1 in the staff report. On an annual basis, after the reorganization meeting in December, city council updates these assignments. To ensure consistency in council appointments throughout the year, members of city council are appointed to participate in a variety of organizations, serving as members or liaisons to represent the city's interests and report on the activities of various entities to city council and the public. As noted on the list that you have in the staff report, certain committee and liaison assignments are predetermined pursuant to the Burbank Municipal Code. For example, the BMC stipulates that the mayor shall be the chairman of the Disaster Council, and other appointments that are traditionally assigned to the mayor and vice mayor include the Airport Ad-Hoc Committee, Public Information Office Advisory Subcommittee, Liaisons to CalCity's LA Division, and CalCity's Annual Statewide Voting Delegate, as well as the Infrastructure Oversight Board and the Southern California Association of Governments' Annual General Assembly Voting Delegate. There's a couple notes on the spreadsheet that I want to make you aware of, there's a few committees that already have appointments that extend either a few months or years past today's date. So, number nine on your list is the American Public Power Association Policymakers Council. In December of 2022, Mayor Schultz was selected to serve a three-year term by the association's Board of Directors through a nomination process. Number 11 on your list is the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust, and this is actually the only additional committee from last year, and council-appointed Vice Mayor Perez to this Board of Directors in February of 2023 for a two-year term, with Councilmember Mullin serving as an alternate. Number 17 is the San Fernando Valley Service Sector Governance Council, which is the metro. Former Mayor Just Helamontes is currently completing his term on the service council through June 30th of 2024, and staff will return to city council with a request for a council appointment when that seat becomes vacant. Lastly, number 18 is the Southern California Association of Governments, also called SCAG, District 42 Representative, Councilmember Anthony is currently serving as a representative, and his term runs through May of 2024. So, council will continue to have the opportunity to report on their respective committee assignments at council meetings during the council committee assignment report. So that pretty much concludes my report, I can answer any questions that you guys have, or council may proceed with making the appointments to the entities listed in Attachment 1, and I'll lead you through that when you guys are ready.
Thank you, Ms. Librato, and I believe we have a comment from City Attorney's Office?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as the council is aware, last year, we conducted Brown Act training for all of our boards and commissions to make sure that we were clear which of their subcommittees were standing committees or ad hoc committees, the difference being, standing committees are the ongoing committees for which their meetings need to be agendized under the Brown Act and follow the same procedures this council does for its meetings in offering the public comment periods. Ad hoc committees are, of course, have limited duration, usually for a specific purpose, and so for the second, for your assignments, number nine, really through assignment number 31, all of those, most of those are for boards that already publish a Brown Act compliant agenda and offer the public opportunities to comment, and so, or they otherwise meet an exception under the Brown Act, the council's participation does. The first page, presumably those subcommittees that are standing committees comply with the Brown Act and would be agendized, and then the ad hoc committees would not, and there's one particular item that the council discussed, which, in my opinion, is not on the list, but I need the council's clarification. It's unclear to me whether the landlord-tenant stakeholder roundtable was intended to be a meeting held by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, in which case, it's my impression that that committee would comply with the Brown Act, or whether the committee, it appeared to me, was really going to be more of a- it appeared to me, was really going to be more of a discussion format. And, and given that it's a focused topic that really has not been before, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, at least my involvement in it over the years, has really been project-based, a, a collection of council members that are available to discuss with staff, specific project proposals that the city might have some funding participation in. And that is different than this particular landlord-tenant tenant protection issue. And so I just, I needed clarification tonight after public comment, whether this committee was really intended more of a discussion format, or whether you, in which case you'd want it to be an ad hoc committee, or whether you intended it to be the, the subcommittee. And I just wanted to add that. And then also whether the council had any comments or questions about which of these it intended, at least the first eight, to be standing committees versus ad hoc committees.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Before we get to questions and comments, we are going, we are going to go to public comment. We do have one public comment card regarding this agenda item, so Ms. Lebrado, if you wouldn't mind waiting closely by. Our first and so far only public commenter is Andre Dionisian, and you will have three minutes when you are ready to go.
Hi, Happy New Year, council. My question, I have a question, pertains to actually what Mr. McDougal was just saying, so I'll, I'll focus that question to you, sir. So I missed, I was appointed, I guess, after this last Brown Act training was given to boards and commissioners. So my question is, is this something that's periodic, that happens every once in a while? For new boards and commission members, is there an online kind of, you know, like you do corporate trainings kind of alternative? Because I find myself every now and again, learning bits, oh, wow, we're supposed to be, you know, this is something I should be aware of, and, and that's probably not the best way to go about discovering the Brown Act by stumbling into it. So that, that, that's all my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dionisian. Astute question. So with that, we'll go to questions for staff or comment, and I would suggest maybe we tackle this issue of the, whether, you know, this is an ad hoc or not subcommittee first, maybe we get that out of the way, then we can talk about other assignments. Councilmember Mullins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the reason I wanted to go first, since that was kind of my suggestion and recommendation to bring forth a committee, I want to talk about intent. The intent was not to have it under the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, it was to be an ad hoc committee. I know we didn't get into a discussion or dialogue to mention the actual words, ad hoc. Sometime, our understanding of what we're trying to say is different from what everyone else may have perceived, and I think this is where maybe got confused, or, you know, in the mix where staff is trying to schedule the meeting, you know, both council member, Vice Mayor and the council member were not sure if it's going to be under this advisory committee. And I, of course, I want to say this, I totally agree with the city attorney that this is not a project-driven, this is a temporary ad hoc assignment, that we just need to get together with a group of people and have, you know, dialogue and a discussion. So I wanted to make sure it's 100% clear, that was my intent. And I, you know, I went away in my recommendation that this really be an ad hoc committee, because we're not planning on having this, you know, year after year, being on the records, as we have with these committees. This is a temporary assignment, and let it go away. So that would be my highly recommended, that would be an ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm not, I'm going to comment last, but if I could ask one comment of Mr. McDougal, just for the benefit of discussion, could you remind us of the legal guidelines or parameters as it relates to an ad hoc subcommittee? So when you're forming one, what are the kinds of questions you should be asking in your mind?
So really, the, the primary issues are, is it a focused assignment, limited term, for which there is a beginning and an end? There's no bright line rule on how long that period is, but if there is a discernible task, and there's a starting point and an ending point where that work comes back to council, then that is a typical ad hoc committee. And what we've been telling, what we've been training the boards and commissions is, identify the subject matter, the starting and the ending point. It's not a school safety committee, because we have, you know, we've, that's one issue where they always want to talk about school safety, and it's like, well, is there a particular one? What's the issue? What's the beginning? What's the end? Because the nature of that is, people want to go away, get some data, come up, look at it, get a recommendation, and provide it to council. If it is kind of an ongoing, year after year type of subject matter, that's what would be considered a continuing subject matter. You know, for instance, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, that's fairly general. Even if it doesn't have a fixed schedule, that appears to me to be more of a standing committee. However, if it was something like a particular project, a committee to look at a particular project, or say, BHC portfolio concern, or debt restructure, or something like that, that's a very defined task, rather than affordable housing issues, which really go across nowadays all our developments, because when we get SB 35 projects, for instance, every one of those projects has an affordable housing component, and it becomes much more general, in which case, the law creates space for public, you know, to comment on that.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, other comments, questions on this issue?
Yeah, definitely. I would just say I agree with Councilmember Mullins's point, and, and thank you, Mr. McDougal, for really putting that in perspective for us, because hearing what the ad hoc is versus what a standing committee is, really creates that difference for us. And I think both Councilmember Mullins's intention and what the public has asked of us would really fall under the purview of an ad hoc committee, so we can tackle this landlord-tenant situation steadfast, and, and in an ad hoc committee that is designed to do this.
Anyone else? Oh, yes.
Just quickly, just to reinforce what's been already said, and to, since I'm partnering with Council, Vice Mayor Perez, sorry, that through the work that we've done, and now that, thank you so much for delineating the, the difference between the two, because I, that for me was a little muddy, so now I really appreciate the clarification. And now that you have clarified those two different types of committees and versus ad hoc and standing, it is, this is clearly an ad hoc situation to me, from the work that we've done already on it, and what the intention was. So that, just to reinforce what's been said already.
Great. Any other comments? No? So colleagues, if it's all the same, what I think would make the most sense is, for this or any other ad hoc committees that we'd like to discuss that are not on this list provided by staff, perhaps we could discuss that first, out the gate. And then, of course, we have, after that, the list that Ms. Lebrado can walk us through, and we'll see if folks want to continue and their assignments are changed. So if that's agreeable to everyone, I'm going to construe a motion by council, a clarifying motion from Councilmember Mullins to create an ad hoc subcommittee. Do you want to just put on the record the, the goal of the subcommittee timeline, things of that nature?
Unfortunately, I know that, I'm aware that both councilmember Tagahashi and Vice Mayor Perez have met and set the goals. I don't have that information, so I think it's important for them, because they've already been involved and working with the committee, so I want to defer to them or to staff. I know what I originally had said in the meeting and what I would like to see happen, but I don't want to overstep my boundaries on their goals.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. No, no, I appreciate that. I think, just off the top of my head, the best for going for naming is landlord-tenant subcommittee, to keep it simple, that's the issue we're tackling. Ad hoc, ad hoc subcommittee, thank you. Missing the key word there. And timeline, I am going to go off the top of my head for a timeline that works for us, but I want to be sensitive and defer to staff, I want to make sure you have ample time, the end of January, to come back to council with just what came out of the meeting. I don't know if that's enough time.
Sure. If, if, if we're still meeting?
Yes.
This month?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I take that as a motion and a second. Councilmember Tagahashi?
I'll second that.
Okay. Just for purposes of discussion, Mr. McDougal, so the way the motion is made, the ad hoc subcommittee would effectively terminate or dissolve once they have completed their task, reported back to the council by the end of this month?
Yes.
Okay.
Or thereabouts.
Right.
It's, it's, it's limited landlord-tenant ad hoc subcommittee, and as we've previously discussed, that work initially, perhaps a report back, but will be folded back into the primary task council has already assigned to staff.
Great. Any other, oh, yes.
Yeah, quick question about terminating at the end of this month? So my understanding is, the council will come back to us as a whole, as a body, and, you know, present in the report, or staff will present in the report, whatever discussion that took place. What if there is a need that this body could say, well, we need additional information? Can we leave that until, you know, so without putting a definite deadline to the committee? When is it supposed to end?
Sure, I think, if, if I might, City Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think just as a matter of law, when we're describing ad hoc committees, it will naturally end when it's achieved its goal, but it comes back to council, so there's no reason, to your point, that we couldn't say, you know what, we want to reconstitute the ad hoc committee, same members, but we want them to go back in the next six months and work on, on this issue. It, we would just, it would have to essentially come back to us to re-identify what the goal is and what the timeline is, after that point.
Yes, and I appreciate, I just want to be 100% clear now that we have, we're having this discussion.
Yes.
So there's no confusions, or somebody's worried, like, oh, it's going to disband, and they're not going to meet again.
Good point.
So it's ongoing until it's determined we met our needs or our goals through the committee.
Well, I think we have a, a motion and a second to create the ad hoc committee, with the membership as constituted. Mr. City Attorney, do we need a, a roll call on that, or can we just go through all the assignments and approve it at the end?
Well, since there's a motion and a second on this very specific issue, I'd like, I'd like a voice vote.
All right, very good. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes, and this is good practice for us to get in the habit of the roll call.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, we'll talk about ad hocs first. Yes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the early part of last year, both you and I were assigned to an ad hoc cannabis retail subcommittee, and I would be comfortable coming also back at the end of this month. I've done my research, and I would be okay. So I'd move that, when we do come back with that, we can do the other ad hoc committee as well, presentation on cannabis retail.
So I don't think that one's on the list, so I think this is a good opportunity to at least capture them.
Yes, yes, and, and I will, I will second the motion, and I'll, I'll elaborate, that I recall last year at about this time, we had the discussion item on commercial cannabis. We decided to take no action, but to have you and I work on that ad hoc committee. I agree that by the end of this month, all have completed the work that I wanted to do, and we can bring it back to the council and, and report it out. And that'll effectively terminate our assignment, unless there's a need for more.
So I guess the motion would be to create the ad hoc?
Well, it's already created, I suppose, if anything, would be to extend the term to the end of the month, to report back.
Can we extend the term till the end of February, just so I could?
60 days?
I, I got to manage the agenda, and?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. All right.
Really quick.
All right.
I'll move, we extend the ad hoc on cannabis retail for 60 days, and come back and present the findings when ready.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Nope, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other new committees, ad hocs, anything else? Okay. Going once, going twice, City Attorney's looking at me, glaring, I'm kidding.
No. Just, just a helpful suggestion, so I think this is helpful for the ones that aren't on the list, to have a roll call vote. I'd hate for you to have to do that on every single item, so if you want to do your picks and then move the whole thing, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I'm glad, we're on the same wavelength there. Okay, so let's go to the first one. Ms. Lebrado, this is your show, take us out.
Yes, okay, let's start with number one, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
And, and just, I know we have it, but so the public can follow along, would you mind just saying who the current folks assigned to it are? And what I'll ask my colleagues is, if you're currently assigned and you want to keep serving, great. If you are, for whatever the reason, looking to change your assignment, or would like someone to replace you, just indicate that, and we can, we can go through it quickly.
So for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, our 2023 appointees were Vice Mayor Nikki Perez and Councilmember Tamela Tagahashi.
Great. And you both want to continue?
Yes.
Okay, then that'll be the order. Next up, we have?
Number two is the Airport Ad Hoc Committee. Traditional assignments would be mayor and vice mayor, so we had Mayor Constantine Anthony and Vice Mayor Schultz sitting on that committee.
Great. I would be in favor of continuing to serve in the role as mayor, and I think it makes the most sense for the Vice Mayor, now Nikki Perez, to, to, to replace Constantine Anthony in that role.
Okay, great. Number three?
No, no one can truly replace you. They can simply do the job. You're, you're good, you're good. Number three.
Number three, the Audit Committee, which is councilmembers, Zizet Mullins, and Vice Mayor Nikki Perez.
Okay.
I'd like to continue.
Great. Okay, that's the order.
Just before we move on, looking ahead, you'll see the Vice Mayor is going to be added to a bunch of these committees, if, if at any time you want to, you know, offload some of the ones.
Are you saying you want Audit Committee?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
But I see your point. We'll, we'll go quick. So number four is our Joint Subcommittee with BUSD, traditionally the mayor and the Vice Mayor.
Yes.
I assume you're up for that, Vice Mayor?
Definitely.
Okay, great, let's move on to Economic Development.
That was Mayor Schultz and Councilmember Tamela Tagahashi.
Do you want to keep doing that together?
Indeed.
Okay, we're set. Fiscal and Treasurers Review Group.
That was Mayor Anthony and Councilmember Zizet Mullins.
Happy to continue, sir.
Yeah, I like that group.
Outstanding.
Okay.
PIO Advisory Committee, that'll be the mayor and the Vice Mayor, so that'll be the order. Racial Equity and Diversity Subcommittee.
That was Vice Mayor Perez and Councilmember Mullins as an alternate.
Okay, I'm seeing they both want to continue serving, so we'll keep that as is.
I don't think we even had a meeting in this.
It's one of those that's as needed.
Yeah, I know, I see it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are some of these more appropriately referred to as, this one in particular, like a liaison role? If it's a subcommittee, you know, admittedly, it, it's perhaps two councilmembers that sit and collaborate on something, but if it's an alternate, is it?
I think that's a very good point of discussion. So my question to my colleagues would be, for some of the, so if you are currently sitting on a subcommittee that hasn't met in the course of the last year, I guess one question we could ask ourselves is, whether there's a need to continue having a subcommittee, whether it should be ad hoc in nature to achieve some goal, or I think, as the city attorney's referencing, should it simply be a liaison position, you know, maybe someone with expertise, someone with ties to the community on these issues? So I guess taking number nine, for example, what is the, what is the, the thought of, of the body?
I appreciate this discussion. I think a liaison is more appropriate, instead of making it look like there's an official committee that we actually serve on when we haven't even had a meeting. So being a liaison, I think, makes more sense than just being the way, the members, the way it's structured right now.
Okay. Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yeah, thank you for this question, and thank you for that, that question too, Mr. City Attorney, because when this, when this Racial Equity and Diversity Subcommittee was formed, this was before the work of the National League, League of Cities formed the internal working group in the city. I went to a couple of this, the committee meetings when it was first formed, so to your point, it does make sense, because the circumstances have changed. In, in the beginning, it was appropriate for this to be a committee, and now it's, it does sound like it's more inappropriate to be a liaison, and maybe in the next section.
Great. Okay, I, I do not disagree whatsoever. The only commentary I would have, assuming that Vice Mayor and Councilmember continue to be those liaisons, is, you know, I, I would say, like, Burbank Human Relations Council, among other groups, could be good resources in the community to keep that dialogue going and to bring information back to council. Just, just, just one suggestion, but I'd be comfortable moving that. Please, yeah.
One further suggestion, if it's okay, is to remove the alternate and make them both the liaisons, versus having one, mayor and one alternate.
All things being equal, I'm going to construe that as a motion. All things being equal, I'm going to construe that as a motion. I think it's pretty clear on the record where we're going. I'm comfortable with it. Is there a second?
I'm a second.
Second and a third. Any other discussion on that? No? Okay, I guess because this is a little bit more specific, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I will just say, you know, going back to the top, one through eight, I feel comfortable with those in their current formation as generally standing committees, with the exception of the airport. So that would take us to number nine, which is the APPA. We've already discussed that one. Number 10, Royal Verdugo Communities Subregion Joint Powers Authority.
Yes, for 2023, that was Mayor Schultz and Councilmember Mullins as an alternate.
I'd like to continue serving as the rep, and I'm assuming, do you want to continue? Okay, so that'll be the order. Next, we have the Burbank Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust. We have discussed that one. I assume you want to continue in that role, Vice Mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Mullins is the alternate. Great.
We also don't have a choice, it's a term.
That's right.
Well, I mean, you know, I suppose you could relinquish your power or whatnot. You could.
Never, never.
Okay. Number 12 is Disaster Council. I believe that is me and the Vice Mayor as the alternate by code. Okay. Domestic Violence Task Force.
Last year, that was Councilmember Anthony and Councilmember Mullins.
Okay.
I'm okay still serving. I mean, if, yeah.
Does anybody else want to go for it? Because I'm happy to serve unless somebody else wants to do it. You're fine? Okay.
Yeah, either way.
Okay, so my only question before we do the assignment is, so Task Force would not be a subcommittee, so I would liken it to the position of a liaison of sorts, you know, sort of?
So it actually is, because the Domestic Violence Task Force, from my understanding, it's an agendized meeting. And so the council, it's not a council subcommittee, it's really a Brown Act, it's handled like a Brown Act body.
I see, okay, okay, great. So with that in mind, so Councilmember Mullins, do you want to stay in the role, or do you want to give up your seat for Tagahashi?
I'm absolutely fine if somebody else wants to do it, otherwise I'll stay.
Okay, unless I hear that somebody really wants it?
If somebody wants to arm wrestle me, we can go for it, but?
I'm not getting the impression there's a desire to arm wrestle.
There's no arm wrestle.
As much as I'd love to see that and lose tragically, but no, I mean, I have, it's first Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, then it sounds like we're going to keep the same appointees for that position. Okay.
Yes, fine.
All right.
And Mr. Mayor, just to elaborate on that, the question that you had, four items, nine through the end, generally speaking, they are all ready, all of them, I believe, noticed Brown Act bodies, in which case the councilmembers are attending the agendized meeting of another Brown Act body. So those requirements are met.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up or not, but given that the primary member and then the alternate, I just want to clarify that I think sometime the expectations that the two members will show up at every committee meeting. So I wanted to clarify that maybe this is not the right time to do it, but since we are talking about it.
I think it's an appropriate time.
Yeah, so if there is a reason why we have a primary and an alternate, so we can fill in for each other when somebody's not there. So if one of the councilmembers is able to make it, then the other one, typically, they don't have to be there, or they can fill in for them if they're available with a reasonable amount of time to let them be aware if they can attend. So sometime the boards or committees are a little anticipating two members to attend. If you can, that's great. If you can't, there's a reason why we have an alternate.
Excellent point, and thank you for that. I agree.
So this is a comment for really, not number nine, because number nine is an appointment, and not number 10, because number 10 are positions. But really, is that a comment that applies to all of these for the external bodies?
Number 10 has an alternate spot.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, I take the correction.
And 11.
That's what I'm saying. They're, to Councilmember Mullins' point, these are not both members attending all the meetings, they're a primary alternate scenario.
Yes. Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, if I could, I think, I think what you're trying to say is, let's talk to each other. If you're on the committees, make sure we know who's coming and going. And if you both want to be there, right, you can both be there. But I think that more important is at least one person is at the meetings and I think that's the spirit of what you were trying to say, yeah.
Okay, well said. So I think we left off at number 14, CalCity's Annual Statewide Voting Delegate, and I believe we dealt with that last year. Typically, the mayor, then the vice mayor, then the councilmembers by seniority. So I don't think we need to take any action on that.
Correct.
Okay. CalCity's Los Angeles Division, I believe that's customarily mayor and vice mayor?
Yes.
Okay. San Fernando Valley Cog.
That one, we had Mayor Schultz and Councilmember Tagahashi as an alternate.
Okay, do you want to keep doing that together in those roles? Awesome. Okay, we're all set. Then, oh, we have number 17, the Service Sector Governance Council. That'll be coming back to us mid-year, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Number 18, SCAG District 42, you addressed. Number 19, SCAG, the annual General Assembly Voting Delegate, and that's typically mayor and then vice mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Valley Economic Alliance.
Last year, this was Vice Member, Vice Mayor Perez and Councilmember Tagahashi.
And do you both want to continue serving there?
Yes.
Yes, and just to update the information is that we're both members, equal members of the board. There's no alternates for this, we both were voted in. So, yeah, so we both attend.
Okay, then we'll make that.
I'll throw my name out there. If anybody wants to step down, I'm happy to do it.
I believe, and the City Attorney can correct me or add that in. So the Valley Economic Alliance voted to do their 2020, the board. So we're technically in for a year in there. I guess unless we want to jump off, but it would be a whole thing with the board. And we were already voted in, much like the other regional ones.
Yeah, and I was in attendance at that meeting, assigning the board. And as a matter of fact, that was something that I thought about because we have our assignments in January and they had theirs done in December. So if in fact that you did want to get off of the board or allow somebody else to do it in January, as we're doing it right now, how is that conflict with the assignment for the board already? Well, they were sworn in. I mean, your names were called and they were sworn in, so.
I can just mention that when Councilmember Anthony and I joined the council, we joined in January after the swearing in, and they do have a process for ratifying someone who joins mid-year, so that could happen. But with that said, it sounds like you both want to continue in that role?
That's fine.
Okay, so we have someone waiting in the wings for the next opportunity. I know Fred Gaines is wildly entertaining. I understand why you want to be there. Oh, yes.
One other point about this particular body. So this is actually not, as far as I know, a Brown Act body, is it, Mr. City Attorney? I believe this is its own, it's a nonprofit. And so this is actually not a Brown Act assignment or?
Is it an organization that's open to the general public?
Yes, to be members.
Okay, that satisfies my concerns.
Okay.
Also, to continue picking at this, it's not the third Monday. It's the, what is it, what, Thursday? The third Thursday in the morning.
Okay, we'll make that correction.
Great. All right, so now we're going to move into our Board and Commission Liaison Assignments. First one up, I'll try to help us, you were doing a fantastic job, but I know I'm asking you to read a lot. So, okay. Board of Library Trustees, I think we just have Councilmember Perez in that role. Do you want to continue serving?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. See, even I did that too. You know, half the night when Ms. Clark says, I keep wanting to vote and I'm, okay, you know, we'll figure it out. Burbank Cultural Arts Commission, Councilmember Tagahashi, do you want to continue?
Very, yes.
Awesome. IOB, that's typically the mayor and the vice mayor. So Councilmember Anthony, you are relieved of duty for those meetings?
Oh, my gosh.
This guy loves those meetings. I've seen him take copious notes.
I have so much free time on Wednesday.
Buckle up, you'll be, those are fun meetings, so we'll be there. Parks and Rec Board, Councilmember Tagahashi?
Happy to serve, but this is also one that if somebody else wants to take this role as well, it's fine. The only reason why I say that is because Cultural Arts and Parks and Rec are on the same day. And sometimes it's hard for me to get both, my day scheduled to go to both. I can still do it, but if somebody else would like to do it, that's fine too.
Does anybody else really want Parks and Rec? Our city manager looks thrilled, he wants to go there. Okay, anyone else?
What time is it on Thursdays?
6 o'clock on Thursday night.
And it is televised, and it's going to have a nice new display, if I haven't already mentioned, at the bottom of the screen. I have to make Mr. Jones happy here and really sell this. Exactly, we spent a lot of time with it, it looks pretty. Good job.
I just want to point to everybody that it has a clock on it, too.
Ooh.
That's my favorite part.
When it gets to 11, does it flash or like break?
It just shuts off at 11. If you don't make the motion, the meeting just ends, telecast over. Okay, okay.
I'm not looking to necessarily get rid of Parks and Rec, but, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Mayor.
No, no.
To get rid of Parks and Rec, but I just wanted to put it out there in case there was somebody who wanted to jump in.
Okay, so if anybody really, really wants to arm wrestle you for it, now's the time, otherwise it sounds like the councilmembers want to.
I could probably do it. I can do it.
Yeah. Okay, you're both okay with that? Okay, so that will reflect, it's now Councilmember Anthony at Parks and Rec.
It's a great department.
I'm already sold. I'm already sold. I already said yes.
I'm assuming you speak from experience, Ms. Lebrado.
I do, 18 years.
Very good, very good.
Councilmember Anthony, I still may attend once in a while, just for, you know, nostalgia sake, because I do enjoy it.
Like I said, just text me ahead of time.
Yeah, okay.
Notice, Mr. Mayor, they don't have an alternate on this one. Maybe we do assign an alternate, so if Councilmember Tagahashi wanted to be the alternate, I'm just throwing it out there, because I don't, I don't see it having an alternate.
Many of them don't have alternates.
We're allowed to put two, though, if we want, or no? I guess the question for our city manager is, historically, is there a reason why, for example, Police Commission is two, but Parks and Rec only has one?
Sustainable has two, Transportation has two.
You have many boards with no liaison.
Okay.
So.
Got it. So it sounds like if you both really do want to do it, you can, but just as easily for any of these boards and commissions?
For instance, let me just explain, Planning Commission does not have a liaison. And that's a good thing, because almost everything that Planning Commission does can be appealed to council, and I would hate for you to express opinions on matters that would come before the council and thereby create some kind of bias. So, you know, that is unique to Planning Board, but there are reasons, it could also be the same for Heritage Commission. So there are reasons why you wouldn't want a liaison and perhaps you may not be able to staff multiple, but anyway.
Okay.
You know, Mr. Mayor, actually, that's not a bad idea, because I do want to go to Parks and Rec. I just find myself sometimes challenged to do both meetings. So if you want to both be liaisons, we can range it so that we're making sure at least one of us can attend.
I'll move that we add an additional liaison to the Parks and Rec Board.
I'll tell you what, if the City Attorney will allow me, because we're just doing assignments, I won't even require the motion. I think we can just appoint both of you to both spots. He's not jumping in and telling me I'm wrong.
My impression was you would just move the whole thing after you got the name squared away.
Then we'll do it that way, that's fantastic. So we have?
Great.
There we go. Police Commission, Councilmember Mullins, do you want to keep doing that one together?
Yes.
Okay. Senior Citizen Board, we have both councilmembers here to my left. Do you both?
Yes, I'll continue doing it.
Okay. Would anybody else want to take the Senior Citizen Board? It's at 1:30 on the fourth Wednesday, 1:00 PM, sorry, 1:00 PM, fourth Wednesdays.
I would, I just have like half this list, so I'm gonna?
And by the way, there's no age requirement. So you're, you don't have to be a senior citizen to be assigned.
They're a fun board. They, I mean, that's a good one.
They are a fun board. I would be fine taking that spot. And again, we could like alternate or take turns, so we don't have to both be there every time. During the middle of the day is actually a very good time for me, it's easier than the evenings, so.
Okay, look at us, we're getting it done. Almost there, folks. Sustainable Burbank Commission. Do the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Tagahashi want to continue in those roles?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have Transportation. So Councilmember Mullins, do you want to continue in that one?
Yes.
I'm happy to, but Councilmember Anthony, I know you were there a long time. If you'd like to return to it, I'm happy to give that spot to you, if you'd like.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so we'll reflect that Councilmember Anthony is now the liaison to Transportation.
Before we move on, Mr. Mayor, I do have a point about this particular commission. So as I have mentioned before, and I wanted to bring it up again tonight, since this is the opportunity to talk about it, Sustainable Burbank and the Transportation Commission meet at the same exact time, in the same exact day in the month. And I have been putting it out there to separate those times, partly because every other commission we have is on a different day and time. But these particular, two particular ones, they are so closely overlapped with their concerns. It's important for folks to be able to go to both, so.
And to supplement that, I have received concerns from community members who feel like they cannot attend or even view both or participate.
I will just jump in and mention, and I think Councilmember Anthony could back me up on this. In terms of the broadcasting of both, we have discussed that at our PIO Subcommittee, there are some infrastructure limitations. As far as date and time and location, since you both have brought up that point, do you have a course, I don't know that we're prepared to do it tonight, but do you have a course of action you're proposing for council or for staff?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, yeah.
I don't know that I'd have a specific course of action, other than asking staff to follow up. I know Councilwoman Tagahashi brought this up around this time last year. So if staff could take a look at that, because we've gotten community members who'd like to attend both, and if staff can find the time. I more leave that to you all, because you know the schedules and the rooms and where folks can go. And also, it would obviously be a discussion with the commission itself.
Sure, we could follow up. I thought we did, but now it's all, you know, a little shady. But we'll follow up and see what we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So finally, we have our liaisons to external committees or community groups. Burbank Association of Realtors, I'm happy to continue doing that. Councilmember Mullins, do you want to continue in that spot?
Yes.
Okay. Burbank Chamber of Commerce, I believe that's customarily the mayor, so I'll take that position. And then lastly, we have the Upper Los Angeles River and Tributaries Working Group. We have, I don't believe that one was specifically dedicated to the mayor. I think Councilmember Anthony expressed an interest in that one. And then I believe Councilmember Perez was the, sorry, Vice Mayor Perez is the alternate. I'm fine with that arrangement, unless either of you don't want to do it.
Two times now, two times. And also, I mean, if you want to continue, that's great. I'm also happy to serve as the person.
Yeah, do you want to switch? I'll be your alternate.
Sweet.
There you go.
Okay, I think that's it. I think that's all of our assignments. I will just mention, you know, the title's not important to me, it's the work that we do. I will try to get better about that. Okay, so unless there's anything else, I'm going to take a motion from someone to approve all the assignments.
I do have one thing before we wrap up.
Please.
And just a general comment. In respect to reporting out at the end of the meeting, this year, we have been attempting to separate our committee assignments and our other things that we do in the community, including the different meetings we attend and whatnot. And my experience in this year that we have often found ourselves blending them together. So I'm wondering if it might be easier just to go ahead, moving forward, to blend those two items together, so we can each report out just once for all the things that we do.
I will second that super quick.
So was that a motion to approve all of the assignments as indicated, plus combine the comment periods?
That's what I heard.
There we go, that's, that's.
And was that the seconds intent also?
That was definitely the seconds.
Outstanding, that's what I heard too. And before we take the roll, I will just say one comment item. I guess I'm inviting the city manager to jump in. I suppose if someone who wanted to report to council on these items didn't want to bring it up in a meeting, we could always have a written report to go home under your coverhead, right?
Absolutely, yeah, just, uh, get it to me, uh, before noon on Friday.
Yeah. Or, or if there was something more substantive, maybe a, a really informative slide presentation that you hear at one of your things that you want to forward to council, either by email or, or those take-home reports, it's another great way to report back to.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, are you saying that the council members would do that?
You can, it, it's just an option. So you can obviously report verbally, um, but I've done it before myself where I go, I attend Cal Cities or something very informative, you can forward it through the city manager and make sure the rest of council gets it. You could even write a memo. I know other councils like Glendale, they do that all the time, they actually write little one-page reports back, so it, it's really just dealer's choice, whatever you're all comfortable with. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Uh, no, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
I almost did it again, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So that concludes our, uh, one, uh, uh, report item. Uh, great job, Ms. Lebrado, really.
Thank you, Happy New Year.
Excellent. Okay. So, um, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to construe the motion that was just made as having taken effect immediately, so rather than have the two separate report-out items, I think we can do it all at once. So now is the time for members of the council to report on their committee assignments or attendance at conferences, regional meetings and community events. Who would like to go first? No, no rush all at once now. Councilmember Mullins, I'm picking on you.
Why not? Um, I feel like it's been such a long time. I said, did I report on these things already? But I guess going back to December 13th, uh, the Chamber Annual Holiday Mixer was a really great event, good turnout, uh, at the IKEA, um, Meeting Center, so it was, it was very successful. December 14th was, uh, attended the Valley Economic Alliance 29th Annual Meeting, Board Installation, we talked about that earlier. And also I ta, uh, attended with Councilmember Takahashi, the City Job Connect Plus Cohort Recognition Ceremony, did a great job recognizing all the graduates, so it was a good ceremony. Um, I attended the Burbank Police Officer Association Holiday Event. Uh, of course, I was here at the Council Reorg with everybody else. And on December 31st, I attended the Second Judging of Burbank Rose Float, and we got to place the rose on the float, so that was exciting. Uh, January 4th, I attended the SCAG Community Economic and Human Development Committee. Uh, on the 8th, I met with, um, a couple of community members. Um, it was, uh, back-to-back meetings that afternoon, but just addressing some concerns and different various, um, concerns and topics for the community. That was it.
Thank you, uh, who is next? Okay.
Thank you, yeah, I think it's been three weeks since our last, uh, three or four weeks, right, okay. Uh, some, I have some of the, a lot of the similar, uh, events, just briefly covering the things that, uh, my colleague did not cover. On the 14th, uh, right after the Valley Economic Alliance's meeting, I went to the Cultural Arts Commission and caught the tail end of that meeting there, where it's super exciting because, um, they're looking at the Little Theater at Macambridge Park and to revamp that into potentially something pretty amazing, so look, look forward to that. Um, on the December 16th, I went, I had the pleasure of going to the Burbank Community Band Holiday Concert. That was amazing. If you ever get a chance to see the Burb, the Burbank Community Band, I highly recommend it. One of their next, uh, performances is going to be space-themed, I think, and I think it's in March, so keep an eye out for that, and they're, they're very well done, very well done. Let's see, um, I just wanted to point out for our Rose Float participation, that we got a really fun picture of the three of us that was published, and I think it was in the leader, so that was cool. And, let's see, on the 3rd, I went to the Civil Service Commission meeting, just, uh, just to say hi and meet everybody and introduce myself, I hadn't gone there yet. Um, that, that evening, I went to the San Fernando Valley Metro Service, um, uh, can't read my handwriting, the Metro Service Meeting, and learned a little, little bit about that. On the 4th, I simultaneously went to two meetings at once. I had two, uh, virtual meetings going on at the same time, the SCAG Energy and Environment, Environment Committee, and the Cal Cities Community Services Committee. I don't have to do that again, that was a very specific, uh, situation, but that was fun, trying to do that at the same time, so, and, uh, Councilmember Anthony said that he's tried to do that before too, so he knows my pain. And let's see, um, and then I also want to mention that, uh, yesterday, I went to the Burbank Coordinating Council and had a chance to, in person, and actually say hi to everybody there and really congratulate them on the, on the job well done for the holiday baskets.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember. Um, Councilmember Anthony, do you want to go next?
I'll be very quick. Uh, I had, uh, two kids, uh, for two weeks with no school, so, um, I went to a lot of movies at the AMC, I went to a bunch of museums and exhibits and, uh, parks, um, and that was all the way up until Friday, so I did get to make it to P-Flag Burbank last night, so, yeah.
Very good, thank you sir, hope you got some rest there too.
Nope.
Two kids will do it, do ya? Uh, Vice Mayor, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, so I attended, I'll, I'll go backwards, I attended the Sustainability Commission Meeting yesterday. Um, they had a very, very wonderful discussion about the plastics ordinance that will be coming back to council. I encourage you all to listen to it, I mean, there is the, uh, MP3 file, it's great to hear all the differing points of view. Um, shout out to Amber for a very extensive explanation of what is recyclable, what is not, and the different concerns like PFOS chemicals that we, we have to look forward to. Um, and, and stay tuned because they also did vote to have the chair come back with recommendations to council, so you will either see those in your inbox or hear those in person soon, so definitely excited for that. Um, and then, uh, though I attended a lot of the events with my colleagues in December, I won't go through them again, and, and also the Rose Foot in January, I had a very special weekend trip. Um, I was able, uh, I want to thank, um, our Metropolitan Water District Board Member, Marsha Ramos, for her wonderful invitation to join an inspection trip of the Hoover Dam and the entire Colorado River system.
Heard about that.
It was phenomenal, I just want to throw some shout-outs out there, thank you to Jason Maruka from BWP for setting it up, he did a wonderful job to the point where I think I arrived at the airport knowing very little, and he just handed me my boarding pass, and it was the smoothest trip of my life, so. Um, um, on the trip, we're also Drew Johnson from BWP, our Sustainability Officer, and we had our amazing new Assistant City Manager on the trip. Courtney and I, we roughed it, we hiked, we traveled, we went in caves, we went inside the Hoover Dam, and we are experts in water now. But we're, we're very grateful, it was a good trip and it was a good thing to learn, and if you're interested in this, please remember, I, I'd love to talk to anybody interested in, in where we get our water from, it's a vital issue for the city of Burbank. We res, we, we don't have any water rights, we receive our water from elsewhere, so if you'd like to talk more about that, I'm happy to do so, and there's some very interesting things coming up in water, so stay tuned.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, glad you made it back in one piece too, that was, that's a fun trip. Um, oh, and also, yeah, special shout-out to our now official and on-the-job everything Assistant City Manager Courtney Badgett, so glad to have you onboard. Um, I'm not going to repeat everything, I just wanted to highlight three quick things. Uh, December 21st, I actually, uh, had my first official act as mayor, and I went to the annual, so I think you, most of you know this, most of you have been, but Essencia does a memorial to remember the lives of those who are lost on the streets of Los Angeles County to homelessness every single year. Um, they do it over at, uh, Forest Lawn in Glendale. Uh, we were joined by Senator Portantino, uh, Mayor Brotman from Glendale, and it was just a really emotional and moving opportunity. I encourage all of you to go next year, um, and really just to make sure that we're not, even in, in, in light of this crisis, we're not losing our humanity and remembering the names of the people that we are losing on our streets, and just committing ourselves to doing more to address homelessness. Um, January 4th, SCAG Energy and Environment Committee, I was there with the council member. The only thing I would add is that it has to go through the SCAG Regional Council, but I think there's a very exciting SoCal Green Print Tool that localities like Burbank could hopefully soon take advantage of, so stay tuned for more from SCAG. Um, and lastly, um, again, Councilmember Takahashi was with me at the San Fernando Valley Cog, uh, yesterday, wow, it's already been a week. Uh, lot, you were right, by the way, a lot of people want to meet with the mayor, a lot of meetings. Um, but this one was important because the cog is doing their first Mobility Academy in several years. Um, we are working with our staff to nominate three staff members to, from Burbank to participate in that academy. I have heard there are going to be vacancies, so if anybody, whether it's a council member, a Transportation Commissioner, or somebody or another staff member, a fourth, a fifth person, really wants to have that spot, I think we could probably get them in. So if that's something that you're interested in, contact me, contact Councilmember Takahashi, we'd be happy to nominate you. That is all I have for tonight. So with that, we'll move to our second to last item on the agenda. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do any members of the council have any items for introduction or request? Anybody? You two, okay, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have two items, one's an agenda item, one's a memo. So first, I would like to, uh, agendize a first-step report regarding, um, the city council's yearly selection of mayor and vice mayor, to consider adding to our council policies, similar to that of Glendale, a rotation based on seniority, number of times being mayor, and number of votes that, uh, is that, if there is equal seniority, to put that into our policies. That's the first. Yeah, okay. And then the second one is I'd like to ask for a memo, um, on the effects and, um, procedures that, uh, the city will be doing in regards to SB 567, and, um, including how in the interim between now and when we fully discuss that item, how the city is going to be, um, uh, enforcing or using that new power from the state to enforce the items, to enforce, enforce the, uh, ah, it's getting late, AB 1482. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else have any other new items? Okay, I, I have a few here. It's first meeting, I, no, some of these are easy. So, um, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, just want to make sure you haven't forgotten my agenda item about human trafficking noticing, I'm hoping that'll come back in the near future.
Yes, in fact, I'm encouraged by your hour this evening, I may work on it some more this evening.
Oh, outstanding, we'll wrap up by 8:10. Uh, second of all, um, I believe about a ye, maybe a year ago, I believe I had requested our resolution about the governance of public comment and how we conduct our meetings and procedures. I know I had asked for that to come back when the new council was seated. We had a lot to tackle last year, um, when we do find some downtime this year, um, that is still something I'd like to revisit, um, especially in light of some of the work that our, um, city clerk has been doing, so I'd just like to have that continued conversation.
So, um, that is related to Councilmember Takahashi's request for the joint city council, school board, um, agenda-setting process. Uh, there is a pending request to have that added to the resolution, Section 5, um, so that could be a related cleanup item that we could address, um, before the council in the same meeting, same meeting.
Fantastic, i- in fact, if both were treated, merged as the same item, I, I think we could tackle all of that in one swoop, so I'm comfortable with that. Third thing is just a, a take-home memo, um, I'd like to learn a little bit more about the, the relatively new first-time homeownership assistance program that is launched in the city of Long Beach, so if that information could be compiled, I can certainly help staff with the resources I have, just to send home to council for consumption and, and we'll see where that goes, that'd be great. Um, and then lastly, uh, just today, uh, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved Supervisor Barker's motion related to hostages taken by Azerbaijan. Um, I'd like to have a first-step report on a similar measure that we can take and adopt here at the city council level. Yes, with that, Happy New Year, I, I have nothing else. Anyone else going once, yes?
Uh, it's not a new agenda item, I just remind, uh, staff, I'm still waiting for the mayor's task force on minimum wage, we have a new mayor, and I'd still like to see that come back.
Actually, I have a, just a point of information on that, it's not a written agenda item request. Mr. City Attorney, could you remind us, what is the procedure to set up a mayor's task force? I mean, do we need a council vote if it's a mayor's task force?
Well, it, it depends upon the work, so there's nothing that prevents, and we've said this to your boards and commissions, there's nothing that prevents a council member from going and gathering information. However, uh, this council has forced residents, very, um, full work program, targeting very specific goals that you all agree on in order of importance at goal-setting, and that guides the staff's work program. It's really Mr. Hess's bailiwick, but, um, in terms of whether we program effort, both Mr. Hess and I need majority council direction to add that to the work program, uh, particularly where it takes resources, legal analysis, et cetera. Uh, so we look to you to incorporate it as part of your goals, we don't really have